Like over room height.
Okay.
I think it's not good. Now, we don't fly, you know, even in the ground, you know, and we have very small window depending on the wind, you know, and.
Yeah, that'll be at the public portion at the end of the meeting. We don't have a long meeting.
Okay.
We'll definitely have it, we'll have an opportunity to talk about it.
Yeah, public safety is like, yeah, it's not a problem as long as you're not impeding anybody, blah, blah, blah. And then I'm there and as I'm packing up, because I only have a very small window depending on the wind.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I'm packing up and then two, two other public safety and they're like, well, no, you can't. Like, but we, we did this six weeks ago. I stood here for an hour, you talked to whoever your hire was saying, and so we weren't impeding anybody, we're good to go. I'm not flying, you know, it's an overgrown pipe.
Yeah. We'll get it on work. We'll have you talk and at the end of the meeting when the public portion opens and that way we could be on the record.
Okay, that's good. Yeah, I just don't know how we go about, you know, this.
Well, we'll talk about it.
There's one person in particular that just keeps, I guess, putting in a complaint.
Okay.
All right, we gotta start the meeting.
He's staffed and pledged salute.
Are we good?
We live by. Let's see.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Welcome everyone, we had the, my name is Maythor, Maythor, but before we, just a reminder that if there's emergency, what? Back in village hall, back doors, go your vehicles, please do not leave until so directed by emergency service personnel will be.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Um, requesting approval of the board meeting minutes of April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, with changes as noted.
Motion due.
I'm, I'm sorry, I need to just mention that my last name is misspelled. It has to be sometimes it, but.
Oh, I, I can tell. Well, we, we got all the, we got all the corrections from Kevin.
Nothing but not, um, sorry, English may I?
Yeah, Kevin called it.
Yeah.
They always corrected in time for.
Alright, I just saw this one and then.
Yeah.
So motion to approve as amended.
Yes.
With change of order on name second.
Okay, and request approval to revise the minutes of the budget hearing of April seventeenth, to add comments which have been omitted due to technical problems with recording equipment.
Motion to approve as further amended.
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay.
It goes on here. You first.
Okay. Bills for the board meeting of May twelfth, twenty twenty five. Five largest bills total four hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars and five cents. Uh, they are night shift for two hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred twenty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents for health insurance. H two M, one hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-nine cents. Sewer expansion, sewer extension. Agile, eighty-four thousand, nine hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents for phase two sewer extension. VHB seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and nine cents for engineering study. And Clear River sixteen thousand, seven hundred sixty-one dollars for sludge removal. Uh, the bills for the week total seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred, six dollars and two cents.
One two cents. The motion to accept this.
Second, then a quick comment, the H two M, that's, that's two things. That's both the sewer expansion where we, at the last meeting, we, uh, we ratified, if you will, or approved the study and the surveying for the expansion, but it's also for the current extension at the same time, so two.
Yeah, this survey, this surveying was not for the expansion, that was for, um, pump station.
Oh.
Be installed at the Lakeview Cemetery, so it's not related to the expansion.
Oh. The H. H two M and the agile. The hundred nine eighty-four thousand. That's who brings excellent, alright.
Alright, so I have the motion from.
My second, is it?
Uh, you second?
Mm-hmm.
Aye.
Um, okay, um, so you have the cap balances here and then Ron has a request for how, um, make the motion on.
Uh, request to hire, uh, Patricia Riley as a box turn clerk in the accounting department at sixteen dollars and fifty cents an hour. That's motion.
Seventy.
Okay, fine.
Very much. Alright. Break each thing down.
What's your?
Hold on, I'm just. Food motion. Once weeks, okay. And we'll go to public hearing. Notices hereby given, the public hearing will be held on Monday, May twelfth, twenty twenty-five at six P M in the municipal building fourteen Baker Street, Patchogue, New York, one one seven seven two, by the village board of trustees of the incorporated village of Patchogue, to amend section four fifteen dash fourteen J of chapter four fifteen of the village code to prohibit stopping, standing, and parking on West Main Street. Proposed local, by proposed local law, a copy of which is on file at the office of the village clerk at said public hearing, any person interested will be given the opportunity to be heard.
What, you, you bring this up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I did. Um, just a little bit of a background, these are two spots that are directly in front of Tina's ice cream parlor. Um, and although beneficial to have parking on Main Street, what I did personally notice, I did a site visit with Clerk Devlin and, um, Tim Norberg, our village engineer. Um, directly, those parking spaces are directly in front of that crosswalk. So if you are attempting to cross from the south side to the north side in that crosswalk, you cannot see oncoming traffic at all. There is a car parked directly there. You actually have to come out almost into the street. And when I did so, just because I wanted to experience, um, what some constituents were sharing, the car, it was the most frightening experience because there was a car right there as I was putting my nose out. So, I can see why, and these were recommendations made by the county, because it is a county roadway. Um, we did reach out to them for their input and their recommendation is to remove those two spots. They said there's nothing else that can be done, no stop signs, no traffic lights because of the way that, uh, the rise of Main Street is, as you're heading west, there's a rise right after the lake. And there's also a curb if you're heading east, there's a curb on Main Street. So those two things, um, make up for a very precarious situation. Um, and unfortunately, with some of the distracted driving that's taking place nowadays, um, you really, we really have to be, um, very cognizant of, of these types of pedestrian safety measures. So, um, I am in support of this to amend it and to take those two spots, um, away for public safety.
Curiously enough, a friend of mine who's actually new to the village, uh, was going over some of the stuff on the agenda. And, and she pointed out without even telling me, yeah, those two parking spots right there are a real problem. So, obviously, people who are driving through the neighborhood are aware that it's hard to see people as they begin to go out. Uh, and that becomes busier intersection, busier crosswalk in the summertime, more children.
Even non-summertime now, that intersection has become so incredibly busy with people constantly turning on and off of Lakeland Avenue that there's been several near misses, dangerous near misses.
I might add, though not particularly, uh, relevant to this, I spell it a little sore relevant, that that crosswalk could use some dressing up.
Though that is also on tap. Um, we have asked Tim to go and re-stripe everything there to make it super clear. Uh, we've also reached out to Dominic Thorn to see, Legislature Thorn, to see if there are additional measures that could be taken through county funds perhaps to, um, illuminate that particular crosswalk a little bit better. Um, we do have the colonets placed in the middle of the roadway. We're hoping that that does help somewhat. We're also going to re-stripe on Lakeland Avenue on the east side of Lakeland. We're going to re-stripe from the corner to indicate very clearly there's no parking and then also delineate set parking spaces on Lakeland, um, to try to make sure that we can not have an over overcrowded situation without interfering with Tiesto's parking situation. Because we do realize that, you know, that's a very, very, very popular restaurant. There are additional businesses as well in that building on the west side. So it's, it's a busy area. We want to make sure we do right by law, but pedestrian safety is paramount.
This, this, this crosswalk is so notorious that you may remember a couple of years ago, I think, I think Tina's may have done this, that a thing where you grabbed a coat flag.
A flag, yeah.
And held it up so that people could see you crossing. It's not a bad idea, actually.
It's not a terrible idea.
Didn't work.
Yeah.
Well, we have, uh, didn't we get some, uh, speedometer things, some, some things that indicate how best some.
They're up and they, they were.
Yeah, well, well, I'll tell you what, that is, going up that hill is a raceway.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you're out in the village, pedal to the metal. When you come around that, you know, we've had two cars run into Lakeview Cemetery fences on that street, okay, going west. Two, two vehicles have gone damaged, I'm sorry.
Any comments on public? Motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Okay. Aye.
We could have gone up for a half minute.
Thank you, Paul. David Kennedy.
Good evening, here to give report from the business improvement district and special projects. Uh, with the business improvement district, we do have our next business improvement district meeting tomorrow night. Um, beautification team is being put in place. Uh, and there, we're gonna, in about two weeks, we'll get the, uh, hanging baskets up around the town. Uh, we're getting the watering crew all ready and signed up to start, uh, keeping this, uh, uh, village looking beautiful for, for the season.
Wonderful.
And we're also, thank you, uh, and then we're also setting up for annual meeting, uh, which will be Tuesday, June the tenth. This is a meeting that all, uh, taxpayers in the business improvement district are invited to attend to catch up with what's going on. Uh, we have about six members that are, their terms are, are up and all six are sticking around and are gonna stay on the board. So we have nice consistency, but, you know, I certainly do want to get out to the public if any big taxpayer hears this. Uh, June tenth, four o'clock here at Village Hall is that annual meeting and we invite you to please come on down. And the other big project, uh, for the bid, uh, this Friday is the deadline for me to get in uh, for round twenty-three, the sub-County Downtown Revitalization Grant. And as we know, we're targeting Waverly Avenue to get some funding, uh, to match with the village is willing to put there and, uh, uh, really starting to recognize that as a main artery to town with some street lighting, some improved sidewalks, uh, and connect it better with the business improvement district. Uh, now on some special projects, uh, ball fields, uh, ready to go, pretty much. Just a couple more things we gotta get done. This week, we're expecting the foul poles to come in and the distant marker signs, uh, to be put into place. And then now we're kind of a little bit at the mercy of P S E and G. I know village engineer, uh, Tim, uh, Nordberg has reached out to P S E and G and talked to Maggie. Uh, so we're hoping to expedite that and, uh, and within the next week or two, we have, uh, uh, the lights to be able to be turned on, ready for league play and certainly ready for us to, uh, do a nice ceremony there, really mark. Uh, if you haven't got a chance to drive by there, it's really turned into a full sports complex. It's beautiful what, uh, has happened down there and the demand for, uh, use of the field has increased already dramatically as more yet as told.
David, has the softball season begun at the old field?
You know, they're, uh, they haven't yet. Uh, she, yeah, so she said like the end of May.
Okay, that's.
Uh, that they are ready to use that old field if we have to.
Okay.
Uh, but we'd like the first softball game to be on the new field, you know, uh, we're getting there. Uh, our next, uh, other project, the theater, uh, arch, uh, the theater walkway arch. Um, happy to report all contracts. We just got the last, uh, bit of contracts in today. Uh, so we're at the point now where we can set the date and I would say within the next week, you'll probably start seeing that go up pretty quickly.
Very exciting.
Uh, now a couple of things, you know, I've been happy, you know, uh, I don't know trustee Devlin has already mentioned this, but, you know, we're considering a little documentary for Patchogue that we're working on. Uh, and I've been asked to help on that project, so excited. We had a nice meeting with, uh, Chris Gamboni, a very talented local, uh, videographer, who is also a documentarian himself, uh, that's working on that. Um, I have been having some meetings with Susan with the fish ladder and that seems to be moving forward. Again, that's a county project, county's taking the lead and, uh, putting a nice little fish ladder there, uh, uh, at, by Patchogue Lake to help the, uh, the owl lives and the, and the American eel, uh, be able to get to their spawning grounds. And the river otter too, that's correct, the river otter as well. And, uh, and then the other, uh, project, and this is something that really trustee Key started, uh, under the direction of Mayor Poty areas. Uh, now a lot of people don't realize that we have two beautiful aesthetically pleasing ponds at the shorefront park and, and at the Wolfhow Sports Complex. They're, look too exposed. So we had a nice meeting last week. You know, DEC is not always the quickest to get responses from and we do need a D C permitting for us to be able to take the frag mighties down. So that's moving forward, probably the fall that we're gonna actually be able to see it come down, uh, but that's moving forward as well. Uh, and then as, as I've been part of, some of my duties, uh, has been helping out with the parks department and trustee, uh, excuse me, uh, parks director, Maria Hilton has asked me to just mention some of these things. Uh, May seventeenth is the Blue Point Shakedown Event, uh, at Blue Point Brewery. And that's coming up this Saturday and they've been very diligent in making sure that they run that festival the right way. Uh, and then Sunday, May eighteenth, is the Hispanic Cultural Heritage Parade. That's gonna start at noon and I'll, I'll let trustee Corio kind of talk about that at her right, uh, time. Uh, we're, right now, we're currently, uh, the parks department is currently interviewing for seasonal positions and seasonal staff, uh, which, uh, starts on May the twen- twenty-seventh, so we're looking for lifeguards, uh, counselors at the parks, uh, to help with the program. So if you're interested in, uh, getting a seasonal job, you know, please visit the village website and, and get in touch with us. Our Memorial Day Parade is gonna be Monday, May the twenty-sixth at eleven A M. Uh, it'll start at the corner of West Main Street and one twelve. And of course, this is a little unique where it goes down South Ocean Avenue and ends up at our Veterans Memorial Park for what's always a stirring ceremony. Uh, and, you know, uh, as the summer season's about to begin, let's not forget what Memorial Day is all about. Uh, summer registration for the summer programs begins on May the twenty-seventh for village residents and then on May the twenty-eighth for non-village residents. Uh, and, uh, that'll be going on from nine A M to eleven A M. Uh, they've made a few changes to registration. We're dependent on your child's age. You'll register at a certain time. So, uh, four to six will register from eleven thirty to two thirty and then ages seven up will register from three to six. Uh, and hopefully that's gonna add, add to the, lessen the lines that have been forming each year for these programs. Holy Angels will be doing their walkathon at Shorefront Park on May the thirtieth. Uh, they'll, we'll be hosting our first annual Marsha Chaskin Memorial Patchogue Open Pickleball Tournament on May the thirty-first, uh, of this year from ten to two at the Ford Sisters Tennis Courts. So if you're interested in getting a pickleboard, uh, pickleball team signed up, uh, please stop at the three eighty Bay Avenue Recreation Center. It's twenty dollars, uh, team. It's doubles only, uh, team. So we need teams of two, only twenty dollars for a team. And if my understanding is, uh, Marsha Chaskin was a very, uh, talented, uh, coach for, actually, I meant for the tennis coach. I, my wife tells me she was her coach, uh, Kingsdaddy.
Yes, her action, her husband was the coach.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you for the connection. Yes, thank you very much.
And Mrs. Chaskin was across the street with tennis courts and she was awesome. She had all the tennis supplies for us. She was like a, essentially like a tennis garage. Had a lovely, lovely living.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you, right. Uh, the dock staff is gonna be begin on June second, so just keep that in mind, starting on June second. Uh, after a certain hour, you will need to be a village resident to, uh, uh, get on the dock and there will be staff to making sure of that.
From nearby parking.
That's right. And then the first day to purchase beach club memberships will be Monday, June the ninth, during the regular business hours of nine to four thirty at the recreation center. And the pool, uh, the Patchogue Beach Club pool will open up on Saturday, June twenty-eighth at eleven A M. I'm sure by the first dive by our mayor, as always, in the pool. Uh, so unless anybody's got any questions, uh, for me, that's my report.
Quick, quick, um, for some reason, over the weekend, I had crosswalks on my mind. I, um, I think we're all aware that it'd be great to get the, the grant for Waverly, but you can only do so much with a hundred thousand dollars, a big road. Uh, this, uh, this is more of a county thing, maybe we can reach out to Legislature Thorn. The striping on Waverly in, in all manner, shape, and form is in pretty bad shape. Crosswalks are horrible. Uh, so maybe as we're dressing the road up and making it more, uh, aesthetically pleasing, but also we could maybe, you know, get Dominic to to the county to do some of that stuff.
No, and I'll talk to, uh, you know, engineer Norberg as well in that, uh, one thing I've learned through this process applying for this grant is we do have an inter municipal agreement that really does allow the village to maintain Waverly Avenue. So maybe this is something even, uh, we could start jumping on as well. So, uh, excellent.
And of course, pedestrian safety is a two-way street. Uh, it, you know, the pedestrian has responsibility as well, but if anyone's ever been driving towards the traffic circle and seen someone, you know, crossing that one, that's, it's surprising and potentially dangerous in those crosswalks. That was, that was that stamped brick?
Yeah.
It's stamped, right? It's gone. Uh, so anyway, I just thought that maybe we, oh, you know, that's something we could do that wouldn't cost.
No, no, maybe we can incorporate it into this project. Excellent point. So thank you, thank you very much, trustee.
Thank you, David.
You got it, thank you.
Denver Public.
Hello. Hello, this is Mayor Trustee, this is Yol. Uh, we actually ran a really cute and kind, um, Mother's Day promotion with the retailers this past weekend. It started on Friday where they handed out the official flower of Patchogue, which is a tuna, yeah, something that I learned quite recently. Um, so that happened with our retailers. Upcoming things that we have going on in the chamber, May fifteenth, we have our fifth annual Facebook Live raffle. If you're in the area and you want to come down and just have some food, it'll be at El Matador Restaurant over on one twelve. Friday, May sixteenth, we have four P M ribbon cutting for the spice and tea exchange. Uh, it's where Quinn used to be on Main Street.
I'm so excited, it's beautiful.
It is stunning.
Has so many amazing products available.
From spices and herbs, but also just, they have these fantastic cold teas. Definitely recommend. Um, May seventeenth, which is Saturday, Gigi's Playhouse Island is running their Gigi Fit Acceptance Challenge at Saxton Middle School from ten A M to two P M. And also on the seventeenth, the Christopher A. Colucci Foundation is holding their fourth annual ping pong for positivity at St. Joe's University from five P M to nine thirty P M. May eighteenth is, is the Hispanic Heritage Parade from twelve to two. May twenty-fourth is the fourth annual Eliana Delator Memorial Stop the Stigma five K from nine A M to eleven A M at Shorefront Park. Monday, the nineteenth, I'm gonna go back a little bit, um, the Patchogue Lioness Lions Club is holding a blood drive at the Patchogue Ambulance Company. It's supposed to be in honor of Joe Keys and it'll go from one P M to seven P M. And then May thirtieth is a launch party for a new nonprofit called Long Island Equality over at Blue Point Brewery from five thirty to nine thirty P M.
Wonderful.
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 Aren't the lionesses also doing like their annual dot guide dog foundation thing on the eighteenth in the morning, I think, before the parade, I believe. Busy day, hope for good weather.
Okay. Thank you.
Have a good day.
As you can see, every minute pre-rudder is in here, so I had a couple of things that. We can't believe. Public safety. Um, with the last time including forty-six partners, obviously, a field appearances, which is wrecked. Over alcohol and any other thing that you don't want to see happen on any street. And, uh, fifty-three responses through dispatch. Right. On. Deep, deep in the other side. The sewer project agile is, is, is working on Pine Boulevard and some camera, I think. If you can, in current week, uh, parks. Running and just cleaning and taking care of the empty areas. We have new hirees doing that, sanitation, we now have that. Right now, we moved over to, um, Winter Brothers in town. That's gonna save between eight and ten percent of our costs, probably the twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars over the course of the year. Our way, we have a new ten wheeler that they're working with and maintenance in conjunction with, uh, Legislative Thorn, who donated a shed to three ninety bay, which is, uh, that's a myth for youth community services. It's, the, um, the shed is being built by our, our guys to transfer it over, over to there and over to to ninety bay and, uh, it's busy weekend, we have the parade and the, the shed down there at Blue Point. So, so there's, there's a lot of stuff happening down deep in the other, always going along. Uh, trustee Brinkman.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, for your planning and zoning report, we do have a planning board meeting tomorrow. Uh, we have one new application, which is for a new home on Pine Law. And we have two adjourned applications, both of which were referred to the Z B A, one of course being the hotels. Um, we've actually asked them to create an entirely new application that they're gonna go through the process again to make sure that the public is notified properly of all of the, um, changes that have occurred since their initial application, uh, prior to coming to this board. Um, and we have on May twentieth, we have a Z B A meeting. Um, I did notice that there was, uh, something incorrect in that. I did receive it today. So I've sent it back to our building department to have it corrected. I will have that posted by tomorrow.
So, so the, I'm sorry, so, so with the hotel planning, which, which we often do, the planning board has decided to get that to Z B A first so that they can handle it before it goes back to planning?
Yeah, so we're trying right now to just make sure that they have all of their new plans of all the things that have changed since they came to us on the board, get a whole new set of plans into Carol, let her take care of it, let all the new applications be processed properly and then we're gonna put them where they need to be.
Okay, great.
So she's, we're in the midst of that right now. Um, so I'll be updating you at our next meeting with regards to that because I'm sure it'll be, um, just about ready at that time. Um, as David did mention, the fish ladder project, very exciting, um, for that, we had a meeting here with the mayor and Legislature Thorn, uh, just to get their input in on the different, um, scenarios that are available and we did think that one was better over the other. So that's going to, we're gonna try to see if we can find now some funding to be able to make it actually happen so that these wonderful wildlife creatures can make their way back to the Patchogue Lake, which they can't right now. Uh, they get stuck in front of the Blue Point Brewery and they cannot get any further because the dam is so, it's six foot high, they can't, they can't get up that dam. So the fish ladder that's going to go in, um, is the Daniele type, if anyone's interested in, in looking that up. It's, it's very exciting the way that they allow then the water to pass by the dam, go along the side and go into a proper spillway that allows these, um, species to be able to navigate properly. So, and then for the river otter, it allows that not to have to cross the rope.
Hmm.
Because they get out and they're, um, seeing some dramatic losses in their population due to being killed by vehicles. So, um, very exciting to be able to help these three species to thrive a little bit better in our village. Okay, so on my wish list this evening, I have a motion, I'm requesting approval to authorize the mayor to enter into the inter municipal agreement with the town of Brookhaven for the transfer and disposal of recyclables and street sweepings.
That'll settle the. Right. That settles all the directions and weight such a community was.
Yeah, so, uh, so that could, contracts already concluded and terminated with the town. This is for the, this is not for the M S W, this is for the street sweepings.
Uh, that was a town take that?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're, yeah, uh, Winter Brothers didn't bid nor would they accept street sweepings and vacuum cleanings from the, uh, dorm rooms, but the town still will. Question becomes what the town's gonna do once the D C closes that landfill and our private car, we want to take it, but we'll cross that bridge when it comes.
Yeah, I'm sure there'll be other municipalities in the same boat.
Yeah, oh, yes.
Interested to see what.
Every local municipality signed the same agreement that we did.
That's a motion.
Second.
Aye.
I'm requesting approval to ratify prior approval of change order number two in the amount of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars for a total performance contract amount of five million, three hundred thirty-two thousand, three hundred two dollars and zero cents, and this is for the E V charging station.
With J C I, that's what's missing.
Yeah, with J C I.
Motion. Second.
David, aye.
I'm requesting approval to authorize a carryover of vacation benefit time in excess of that which is contractually permitted for Emily Gaddy from the current year to the year commencing on her next anniversary date. That's a motion.
Second.
Aye.
Requesting approval to enter into a contract with Verizon to monitor the solar panel activity at the railroad station at a sum not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars a year. Um, and just for everyone's knowledge, that's because of the scale of this particular type of project, um, must have a rapid capacity shutdown. Thanks to trustee for, for helping me with all of this great information.
great information. Um, we need a fiber optic line in order to accomplish that. So that is what we're doing, just to ensure that there are fail safes in place so that there are no discharges of electricity.
Is it a New York State mandate? That is, or?
It's a P N C and G mandate.
Yeah.
Uh, we have to be able to to cut it in milliseconds. Three seconds is not enough, which would be the timeframe with Wi-Fi.
Then it's a single source.
Yep.
Direct line in.
Verizon, Zoom, the witches, you can't even put it up.
And then the original proposal, uh, the megawatts that are coming out of it were underestimated. So, this is a requirement for big systems. The 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 one in back of the theater does not have this kind of.
Capacity, yeah.
Okay.
So that is a motion.
Second. Second.
Okay. Aye.
Aye. And I'm requesting approval to change the start date of employment from May first to June first for dock staff Noah Monte, Jennifer Wajabowski, and Donald Lefty.
Second.
Okay. Aye.
Aye. And that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Trustee for.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I got a couple of things. Um, request approval for uh, of H two M uh, proposal number L P twenty-five, zero, five, five, two for professional land surveying services, uh, partial topographic survey of Lakeview Cemetery's West Main Street, uh, District two, zero, four, section eight, lo- uh, block nine, lot two. Uh, we're going to put a uh, sewage treatment pump station in the uh, like in the corner of Lakeview Cemetery, southeast corner, to accommodate the new development on Main Street and the eastern part of the village. Uh, I'm sorry, western part of the village. That's that's motion.
I'll second that. So this is probably currently belongs to Episcopal Diocese of Long Island, but there's contractual uh, uh, terms are being discussed.
Terms are being discussed, yes, uh.
Really to acquire it.
Yeah, and and you know, the the uh, uh, Archdiocese was very cooperative and very supportive of our our doing this. So it's uh.
It's gonna look like the one at the post office.
It's gonna look like, well, I think, I think it's gonna look better. Uh, I don't know what most of us, because I think it's gonna have plants around it. It's, you know, it'll be uh, innocuous. Did I get a?
Yeah, I seconded that. There's a motion.
That was a motion, yeah.
I seconded it. Aye.
Arrested, uh, request approval to ratify prior approval to hire Sean Hanley as a D P W seasonal worker at seventeen dollars an hour. That's motion.
Okay.
Aye.
Now, the next three uh, uh, requests that I have are all associated with the uh, the B I D Waverly Avenue project and, you know, they're I'll just read. Request approval of a resolution in support of the Village of Patchogue Business Improvement District grant application through the Suffolk downtown revitalization revitalization program round twenty-three. That's a motion.
Second.
Aye.
Request approval to appoint the Board of Trustees lead agency for purposes of secret for the Business Improvement District's grant application for Suffolk County's downtown revitalization program round twenty-three. That's a motion.
Second.
Aye.
Request approval of a negative declaration for the purpose of secret for the Business Improvement District grant application for Suffolk County Downtown Revitalization Program round twenty-three. That's a motion.
Second.
Aye.
Okay, say it fast three times. Uh, okay. Uh, request approval for the Patchogue Lions Club to hold their annual Fourth of July parade on July fourth from ten thirty A M uh, to eleven thirty A M with lineup beginning at nine thirty A M on West Avenue of Main Street. Parade heading east to Rider Avenue with appropriate road closures. That's a motion.
Second.
Aye.
And last, request approval to access uh, Speed Century fifteen radar box serial number as listed. And a Stalker P M G radar box serial number such and such. That's a motion.
Second.
Aye.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Just trustee Weeks. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, I've got your building and housing report for the month of April twenty twenty-five. This is the field report. It was a busy month. With the weather's getting better, people are out and about. So we had six building and housing summons is issued, uh, nine permit permits for plumbing were issued, fifteen building permits were issued. That's a lot. Uh, zero permits for demolition, twenty-three rental permits were issued. There were thirty-nine notices of violation and twenty-one complaints were received. No illegal dwellings reported and and no overcrowded properties were being investigated or uh, having summons is issued. There were four applications for the Usprius Planning Board, two for the zoning board of appeals, and one, uh, four rather, for the Architectural Advisory Committee, and I will have the financial report. It's a doozy. It's a good one uh, at the next meeting for the month of April. Um, I wish that this evening I'd like to request approval for the Patchogue Garden Club to have a banner hung on Main Street rooting their twenty-third annual garden tour, which will be held on Saturday, July fifth. That's a motion.
Second.
Aye.
I'd also like to request approval for the Patchogue Garden Club to use the community garden on the corner of South Ocean Avenue and Terry Street for garden tour ticket sales on Saturday, July fifth, from nine o'clock in the morning to twelve noon. That's a motion.
Second. Aye.
I'd like to request approval to go out to bid for the Shorefront Park Boardwalk and Stormwater Improvements Construction as detailed in New York Department of State Contract C one, zero, zero, two, two, nine, seven. That's a motion. Second.
Second.
David. Aye. I'd like to request approval for the Patchogue Metfor Library to hold their outdoor painting program, also at Shorefront Park on Monday, June the ninth, from six P M to eight thirty P M. That's a motion.
Second.
Aye. I'd like to request approval for the Patchogue Metfor Library to hold their environmental education program on Saturday, June the twenty-first, from ten thirty in the morning to eleven thirty in the morning. That's motion.
Where?
I'm assuming at the library because it does not say.
Valerie, do you remember?
Someplace. In in the Village of Village of Patchogue.
But it's playing with packet here.
It's going to be in the Village of Patchogue.
I should be packing.
I'm fixing all of my.
Sorry. Should be in Parks and Rec.
It's on the Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
Shakespeare.
Um, Shorefront Park.
Shorefront Park. Is that a motion?
Well, amend the motion to say that it will be held at Shorefront Park.
Second.
Aye. I request approval for uh, Shakespeare in the park to hold their dress rehearsal for their production at the band shell in Shorefront Park on Tuesday, July the first, from six P M to eight P M. And then afternoon matinee from on Wednesday, July sixteenth, from two thirty P M to four thirty P M. So two dress rehearsals. That's a motion.
Second.
Aye. I'd like to request approval for soccer shots, these little guys and gals, to use the Four Sisters Sports Complex for their soccer soccer practices on Saturdays, June the twenty-eighth through August the twenty-third, from nine A M to twelve P M. And Thursdays from July third to August twenty-eighth, from four thirty P M to seven P M. That is a motion.
Second.
Aye. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor. Oh, no, that's that's really off the old agenda.
They have the new agenda?
I do have two more things on my on my agenda, yes. I'd like to request approval to set a public hearing to amend chapter three sixty-nine, article one of the Village Code for Stormwater Management. That's a motion.
Second.
With the.
Uh, we can do that at the next board meeting, which is May twenty-sixth. Oh, twenty-seventh, right.
Tuesday, alright. Okay. Aye. I'd also like to request approval to set a public hearing to amend section four thirty-five dash ninety-nine of the Village Code for Performance and Design Criteria for Stormwater Management and Erosion and Sediment Control. That's a motion.
Thank you. Second.
Aye.
I actually did.
Yeah. May twenty-seventh.
There's sort of a hand in glove.
Yeah, we combined here.
May twenty-seventh, that's all I've got. Trustee for.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm gonna be brief. Uh, I would like to request approval for the United uh, Veterans Organization of Patchogue to hold the annual Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May twenty-sixth at eleven A M. Motion.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Request approval for the Patchogue Shepherd Youth and Community Services to hold in yoga in the backyard of the grounds of three ninety Bay Avenue on Tuesday evenings from May thirteen to June twenty-fourth from six thirty P M to seven thirty P M. Motion.
Second, is that for children or adults or both? Do we know?
I think it's for adults, um, it's because she said it more like a fundraiser for them.
No, second that. Aye.
I would like to request uh, approval for the QAnon Club of Patchogue to hold their uh, Bay Fest barbecue and raffle sweepstakes at the Fireman's Park on Saturday, June fourteenth, from one P M to five P M with a setup uh, date of June thirteenth and a breakdown date of June fifteenth. Motion.
Second.
Aye.
Okay. And then I would like to request approval for the Patchogue Fire Department to hold their fourth annual car show on Saturday, September twentieth, from nine A M to one P M. One P M, brain uh, brain date, September twenty-seventh, with a street closure of East Main Street from South Ocean Avenue to Leepolet. Motion.
Second. Aye, that's the Paul Fleece Annual Memorial Car Show.
It's a wonderful event.
Yeah, it was really cool last year.
No, I was like, you're American.
Oh, and uh, I would like to just remind everyone that the parade is this Sunday, so please stop by. It's gonna be a very short parade. Uh, one of the shortest, I believe, but.
Full of fun and excitement and.
Good weather.
I can't wait.
Hey, um, any comments for the board? Yeah, publicly heard, they're here. But.
Uh, and please, when you get up here, state your name and address for the record.
My trustees, Jesse Reynolds, forty-eight Oakview Avenue, Farmingville. So I'm requesting permission to ultimately fly a kite at the park at the end of South Ocean. It's a pretty big kite. It's basically a power glider, but it's ground handling only. We are not leaving the ground. We are doing it in a safe and respectable manner. Uh, we have had um, the town called multiple times from one person in this particular house that I've had words with. Um, and that's the only complaint, as far as I know, that we've had. Um, we've had public safety come down and they said, well, we don't have a problem with what you're doing. Um, and supposedly they contacted one of their higher ups, and they said that it wasn't a problem.
How often are you going to be doing it?
Not very. So the problem with ground handling is it depends on the wind direction and the wind speed. I've been flying a very long time. And there's only a certain window of wind and direction. If if I had to break it down, you're talking maybe one day a month, two days a month, and you're talking about maybe a half an hour to forty minute time span, and then the window's done.
No, we, we do take, you do take off in Shorefront?
No, 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 we don't. We don't take off at all. We do not leave the ground. We're basically flying, I can show you pictures if you like. It's a wing that you would fly in the air, but it's ground handling just, you know, you're standing still, and you're basically just practicing keeping the kite in one location. That's all it is ultimately.
What tethers you to the ground?
I do.
So it's up to lift you?
No, that's why wind is a big factor here. I I have particular apps that tell me when and where I can do this. And because of where I live, this is the most convenient and open location, and it's the safest location. You know, no trees, nobody to get hurt, you know, and I, if if need be, I do have law enforcement, Fifth Precinct, that has been there. And they will verify that I do it in a respectable manner. You know, I've actually had the the um, that club that's across the street, I've actually had photographers from there come over and take pictures and you know, it's it's kind of something to look at. But again, I have a very limited window when we can practice. And uh.
Which park? I'm sorry, which park are we talking about? The end of South Ocean Avenue?
Yeah, so that grassy area next to like the playground? That grassy area with the walk that goes all the way around?
Oh, Shorefront Park.
Yeah, yeah, so we stand right in the middle.
Extreme, extreme, like western end of Shorefront Park? Which is a big, open grassy area?
Yes, we are right in the middle of that grass area, and it's 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 only myself and my son doing it. So it's. Uh, the whole thing, I mean, it's a very light nylon. The whole thing weighs less than a comforter. And so it's it's not very dangerous.
Yeah, so then my question is, what if it came down, hit somebody who was in a car?
Oh, well, first of all, we're too far away to actually hit somebody because of where we do it. And second of all, if it fell on you, it's no more than if a blanket fell on you. It, yeah. If I showed you a picture of it, you'd say, I mean, it's it's ultra, ultra thin, like nylon. It's.
Basically, flying a kite, it's a large kite.
It's a large.
It's a large kite. Yes, that's exactly what it is. You know, it's not considered at this point any aviation equipment unless you leave the ground, which is not our intention in any way, shape, or form. As a matter of fact, when we actually fly, we leave New York. We we have a better place in Jersey that's wide open, you know, so.
So it's just like practice?
That's what it is. It's basically just to keep our, you know, you know, our skill set, you know, above par.
You're training in a way.
Constantly. It's a constant training, yeah. It's like driving a car, you know, if you stop doing it, you lose your edge. So we have to do it as often as we can. On the North Shore, I have another place that we're allowed to do it. You know, and again, depending on which way the wind is blowing, so we're we're kind of divided.
Is that a public park?
On the North Shore? Yes. Do you, do you have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is there, there's no danger to anybody?
No. If I if I showed you, you would understand. It's it's a, it's it's a giant, you're you're flying ultimately a giant sheet.
Could have put somebody's eye out.
It's. No, no, it's, yeah, you know. No, there's no sharp edges on it. No. Mr. You.
So, um, I know exactly what you're talking about. I've seen it.
Yes, there are, listen, in 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 defense, there have been people that haphazardly fly that.
Yeah. So, yeah, I'm sure you're, you you appreciate that the board's gotta go to the lowest common denominator for safety, right? You may be the most professional, excellent Olympic level of this, but there are amateurs who are gonna hurt somebody, right?
Correct.
So I always try to say, you know, when the board is gonna analyze this, the inversion of what you're saying, right? So you're saying all these things that 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 are careful and good and trained, you know, professionally acting. And think about the people who are not professionally acting. And just one of the things that just, maybe you can help us though, right? It's not man. It's not a vehicle. It's just a piece of nylon on lines.
It's a, it's.
You who always keep your feet on the ground.
Correct, and I not only am I on the ground, but I am also tethered tethered to a second person as a security precaution only.
So what precautions do you take for lines if some, if a kid is driving by on a bike or something that that you set out a security area or some perimeter?
If I was to stand in the middle of this room and the kite fell down, it wouldn't go any more than three feet past the wall.
What about the lines that tether you to that?
They, they're obviously between said kite and me, and we're in the middle of the grassy area, and there's always somebody as a friend of mine that'll make sure that if anybody is coming. Unlike a kite that you really can't control, we can put this down instantly on the spot.
How big an area do you need to have a clearance area for the line?
Uh, a good safety net would be forty foot round.
Forty feet?
Yeah.
Okay. It's a big occupancy of the park, the park.
Yes, in in one area, yes, for potentially up to a half an hour.
Uh, as the maximum?
Pretty much, yes.
The attorney, this concerns that that park is used a lot. Was I gonna throw a blanket over your head? That that we don't impede upon other people's opportunities to use the park because they come in and see what you have.
Nor do we impede on other people using the park in any way, shape, or form.
Mr. Egan, um, if we give this gentleman permission to do this, we have essentially sponsored him. Well, if someone else comes along and there is an incident, do we have liability?
So, yeah, well, I would take the opposite position. I would say that it's not prohibited right now. There's always the safe operation in the park, which is enforced, and that's what the village, when you when you speak with the village constables.
Right.
They're always making a peace and good order determination.
Correct.
What was the, what was the basis of the complaint?
Basically, the complaint was the person in that particular house uh, said that we were getting too close to his property line. Which I I have multiple witnesses that that's nowhere near the case. It's just one person that's just unhappy for whatever reason, and I'm the target. I get. I mean, that's pretty much it. I mean, ultimately, uh, you know, I'm looking to fly a kite. You know, uh, I am less likely to hurt somebody or get hurt, you know, than somebody playing on a swing set at the park. Uh I am less likely to hurt somebody or get hurt, you know, than somebody playing on a swing set at the park. You know, a hundred feet over from me. You're more likely to have somebody get hurt there than what I'm doing.
So I would probably say probably it would it could continue, I would say, but just be subject to uh public safety determination on. Peace and good order, cause obviously, as the mayor expressed, if there are kids on bikes, there are people who don't have the same level of awareness. Yeah, yes. And sometimes there are there are people who this board has the responsibility to look out for, such as kids. Who aren't necessarily having the same heads up awareness on uh when they're riding a bike or what or or older people walking their dog. Even absent minded lawyers who walk their dog, you know, sometimes they're walking through these circumstances. You we we have to look out for all of them. So I would say it still is going to be responsible for public safety.
Well, I I consider peace too. You could talk about this forty foot area.
Well, you asked for a s- a a safe area. That would be a really safe area.
Basically, what you're saying is in that forty foot area, if somebody's actually walking because they want the pass.
I'm nowhere near the paths. If the kite was to come down, it would not go. It would probably be at least twenty feet from the pass.
Stop people from doing what they would like to do, just visually. You know, it it's great to say, it's like going to a car show. And and the guy turns on the motor and he's got a. A big four twenty-five and it's in the screen. The car's not gonna move, but nobody's gonna go near either. When people see and what their perception is, is what concerns me. Is is the perception that you're taking over this area and I can't go in it? You know, this is a public park. We just put over six million dollars into it. And we have another two million that's gonna go into it. I don't want to have somebody come to this board and say, I went to the park and this guy's playing this thing and I can't get near the park in their minds, you know? I'm not saying it's so, but. Is there anything to do with it? Um. Can a kid that weighs thirty-five pounds, in in they're holding on to it, get sucked up into the air with it?
No, as long as I'm attached to it now. Your honor, what you're describing is no more than if I if I went with my family and I was playing soccer in the middle of it. They are gonna utilize more square footage than I'm going to use with my kite. You know, uh all I can do is go there and assess. The area that is allowed for me at that particular moment in time, depending on who's there, and with good sense and judgment. Decide whether I can actually fly here safely or not. You know, it it's it it goes down to common sense.
There's not peace doing it every day.
No, I'm not. Like I said, I have a very small window on which I can do this. And the majority of the time when I do go to do it, my window is cut abruptly short by a public safety officer showing up. You know, because a a certain individual is putting in a phone call.
So it's not as a person that was in the park?
No, never.
Never.
Never. They most, from what my experience, the the people that are in the park at the time, which generally start off very far away from me. Start the crowd, because they wanna take pictures and they wanna ask questions and they wanna learn. You know, I mean, honestly, you guys have, you know, risks and liability and all that. I I would suggest possibly on a, you know, on a. On a, you know, a per person basis as far as doing this. Because, you know, once you let one person do it, someone else is going to wanna do it. I understand that. But that's why, you know, you do it on whether it's a a permit or, you know, or a permission basis per. You know, per event, per person.
Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna formal, I I don't think we're gonna formalize it by issuing kite licenses down there, but uh.
Which I looked into. There's there's no rules or regulations about flying a kite there whatsoever. And essentially, that's what I'm doing.
Yeah, the kind of operation is not so much the issue, it's the it's the lines, you know, because, you know, if you're if you're doing it with normal practitioners. You know, you'll bring it up, you'll bring it down, you'll sweep the ground, you'll come back up, you'll do the all those kind of things, those great tricks that are fantastic to watch. The kite is attached to the courts. The you're a great operator, you know, you 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 experienced, you do again, your Olympic level, doing all these things is great. We applaud you, fantastic, makes the great videos. But this board's just gotta watch out for absent minded thirteen year old kid or absent minded nine year old who decides to go get their ball and run through the field in that area. So uh you you make good points about, you know, all communities kicking a ball, gets a kickball to the face, it happens too. Um I I I think what we've just gotta do, like everything is, we've gotta judge proves, we gotta rely on our public safety officers. We can have a discussion with them with regard to operation there. It's not prohibited under the code. And uh leave it to their judgment. Uh there's a question as to whether will the operation is safe.
Yeah, maybe talk to Jim Burbage and we have some other issues. If I may, every public safety officer that has shown up there is trying to put it on in your lives. And if it was up to them, they'd already said that they they have a problem with it.
It would behoove us not to speak to them as to why they. If they have any concerns, if they've seen any. I haven't seen what you do. And you can see the fact.
I can show you right now what I do if you'd like.
I and I can't, I don't have the same aptitude as I can go out and fly a kite now. People told me to go fly a kite. I'm gonna speak to Jim Burbage, Public Safety. And either myself or someone with the bill school who got back here within a couple of days.
We've we've done this sort of thing before. There was, uh I think it was last year, a proposal to operate a uh. Uh a bicycle with, you know, several people pedaling a bike down the street, stopping off various places. It was an awful idea and our decision was to. Let's ask Jim Burbage what public safety thinks about such an idea before we make our decision.
Could be a complaint made. I would like him to be able to say, I spoke to the village board and he has approval to do it and that's what you want us to do. But I can't do that and I can't give that authority until I speak to Jim. And public safety, he's a director of public safety. And let him talk to to his manager who's spoken to you.
We have to do our due diligence, just to make sure public safety paramount.
I I just like, yeah, Maria Hilton, uh the the parks director, she did. Five minutes for the meeting, call me. I guess she was aware you were coming down today.
Yes.
I was definitely.
Yeah, I I tried doing I tried doing two things at the same time. I tried doing my slow way and in return, showing my son the proper way of going about things.
Sorry, I I think what the village board is saying, she'd like to talk to the different people. This is the first time they're being aware of it. They wanna investigate to their staff with it. I would like to set up a meeting and we can talk about it. I I think we're open to the idea or allow it.
This isn't a note.
Yeah.
Just let me do my homework. I can do your homework, I do my homework. You can show your son, what I'm saying to your son is that this is how you do it. We show up, give us the opportunity to do a little bit of research, we'll get back to you and we'll go forward from there.
Appreciate it.
Um can you give me your your personal last name again?
First name is Jesse, J E S S E.
Okay.
Last name Reynolds, R E Y.
Let's 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 just do the broadcast, let's have it here to you right now.
Yeah, maybe write on a piece of paper and give it to our deputy.
We don't need to broadcast it to. Yeah, just give her your phone number.
Oh, yeah, let's get all that.
Jesse, we didn't say no, Jess.
Just gonna see how to do what we do and what we do very well here in the village.
Correct. Yeah, and I and I gave you that forty feet, even though the kite itself is probably no more than. Twelve feet above my head, fourteen feet above my head. So that's a a very large margin for error. Is how I play that.
This is in no way, shape or form, no. It's just get let us do our due diligence.
Sounds good. Appreciate your time.
Yes, young man.
Hi, Mark.
You're not gonna walk out on me.
No, no, I'm sorry. I guess if you apologize, because I've been sitting behind you from the beginning, I think become mayor and everybody. The day, also, I I was in Saint Saint Francis for two days, so that's right before, right after I left here.
Over here? You become a Catholic?
No, Saint Francis, hospital in Rosalind. I I like to meet the Pope. But uh uh I just wanted to say, uh that Saturday that they were in the theater. We have a phenomenal day. They weren't any from protesters, so I don't know what happened to them, but there was nothing. We called our, we emailed our customers and text them and said, if you can come a little earlier, it's better for you. So they did. A lot of people came earlier and we had a phenomenal day uh day before Mother's Day, so. It's been a tough, you know, couple of months with the weather and the and the tariffs, you know, cause they're. I don't care what happens with China. It's uh they said they're making a deal with China. I I maybe for ninety days, but something's gonna happen. But they're not gonna raise, they're not, our companies aren't gonna lower the price.
They never did.
No, so. Walk hole with the bra company and uh miracle suit, I said, uh uh swum suit company. Their expenses as it is.
Gonna say that.
So, you know, we know that. Like when we um. On the on the base group, we get fifty percent off right away. So, you know, to the customer, so.
And Mark, for the record, the mayor intervened with the police department with regards to keep the.
Thank you, thank you.
I was not there.
Yeah, I I was waiting, I was at my at my parents apartment.
Yes.
Uh recovering. And I wait for them screaming, but nothing happens, so I get out.
Yeah, we're talking about slowing it down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Take that life.
Yeah.
You know, there's a lot of fear.
Yeah, I know.
Terrible.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
Yeah, you feel better, Mark. I I do.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.